Good afternoon and welcome to this evening's meeting of the February 26, 2019, school board meeting. Let me remind everyone that's in the chambers, if you would please silence your cellphones while you're here. That would be nice for all of us present. And let me begin by calling on member Gallo to lead us in a moment of silence. Member Gallo, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. A very dear friend of our family passed away on February 17th. His name was Tom O'Donnell. He was family to my husband and my two girls. He also was a 25-year veteran of Orange County Public Schools. He worked in the property auditor department during that time. So I'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to him, and during it, I will be thinking of him, I will be praying for his family, and I encourage you to send them your thoughts and prayers too. Thank you.
And now I'll call a member Gould to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And we also have an announcement, a sad announcement, about another one of the members of our family, and I want to call on our vice chair, Ms. Gordon, to address this issue.
Right, we thank you, Madam Chair. We want to thank the superintendent, there are several names in our board doc that have passed away in various departments, but I did want to acknowledge one of the teachers from my district. She started in 1991. Mrs. Romero was a first-grade teacher at West Oaks Elementary. So Dr. Jenkins, thank you so very much for acknowledging her and several others within the different departments that have passed away this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, absolutely, thank you, Vice Chair. Tonight, we have several special recognitions. One of them is STEM-tastic students. I say that because the winners of the Benjamin Banneker STEM Award are here being recognized today. Students were considered for this award based on their GPA, math courses, their future goals, and a nomination letter. With us tonight is the Benjamin Banneker Association's past president, Margaret Walker. Where's Ms. Walker? Ms. Walker, welcome. Why don't you come to the podium? Can you please give us a little bit more information about the program and the honor raised tonight?
As the immediate past president of the Benjamin Banneker Association Incorporated and a product of the Orange County Public School System, I am honored and honored to be here tonight to recognize some STEM fabulous students. STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, with a focus on mathematics. These students' grade point averages ranges from 4.86 to 5.19. In addition, all of them have taken or are presently taking advanced placement courses, which includes AP Calculus, AB, AP Calculus BC, AP Statistics, with one student taking IB Statistics and Introduction to Differential Equations. The first student is Raquel Moxey, a senior at Apoka High School, 5.1905 GPA. She plans to do a biology major. She hopes to spend the bonus of her time researching laboratories focusing on neuroscience and molecular genetics. The second student is Peyton Kroski, a senior at Dr. Phillips High School, 4.86. She started the girls' code club at Dr. Phillips. She intends on entering this field and representing undisturbed communities through computers and programming. Kroski Watts, a senior at Freedom High School, 5.1186 GPA. She would like to combine her passion in software engineering and her interest in psychology to develop the applications to help explain the behaviors of children and mental disabilities. Next student is Tanaya Wilson, a senior at Jones High School, 4.9 GPA. Being in the top 5% of her class, her graduating class and the student government president provides her the drive to become an occupational therapist. She hopes to one day own her own nonprofit. Harry Okwano-Kwankow, a senior at Lake Nona, 5.037. He's a member of the first-ever high school partners NASA project and the 45th Weather Squadron. He plans to major in biochemistry and eventually become a pediatrician. The next student is Davy Jasmine, David Jasmine, a senior at Akoi High School, 4.9 GPA. He is in the top 5% of his graduating class. David took six advanced placement courses last year and is taking five AP classes this year. He hopes his studies will help him to pursue a career in the medical field as an anesthesiologist. And our last student is Tanil Malcolm, a senior at Olympia High School, 4.9 GPA. Being creative and thinking outside of the box, Tanil plans to major in biomedical sciences. She desires to affect the lives of others by becoming a pediatric surgeon. Let's give all these outstanding students another hand.
Ms. Walker, thank you for a job well done. Would you escort your team up here? We would certainly like to congratulate you and each one of them. And boy, are they setting a high bar. Got it, thank you. Wow, is that the way to start a meeting, or what? Unbelievable. You guys, just amazing.
That's a pleasure.
I tell you what, we are all going to be watching to see where you go, and you have really set a high bar for all students of OCPS, but does that ever indicate what great education you've gotten here and what great mentorship you've gotten and your parents and everyone who's involved in your life to this point? We thank all of them as well.
Are they here?
Are they here, our parents or any of their educators? Please, please. Stand up, parents. Oh my gosh, yeah.
And I taught all of the parents.
That is one thing about Vice Chair Gordon, she has been here so long, she has taught so many people that there's not a good thing that happens, that she doesn't have an assistant. That's awesome. Okay, well, we are going to move on to our next celebration. Tonight, we have a special guest from CFE, soon-to-be addition financial. Representatives are here for a check presentation made possible through my CFE for school affinity debt card program. Through this program, every card transaction will trigger a donation from CFE to the foundation for Orange County Public Schools. We are so proud to welcome and introduce our friend, our partner, President and CEO Kevin Miller. And Mr. Miller, you have a number of members of your team with us, and I'll allow you the privilege of introducing them.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. With me today, I've got Lynn Ding, Eddie Sanabria, Katie Thomason, and all the way in the back is Rich, and this is my team we brought here. They're so happy to be partners with OCPS. Before we get into the debit card presentation, there is something I did want to announce. The school district reached out to us about these fantastic students, and before you guys leave, if you guys visit Rich, who's in the back, the very tall man in the back waving, Rich has a gift bag for each one of you, and inside of it, besides various goodies and gifts, there's a gift card for each one of you for $100, as well as some certificates that we've made with each of your hands on it. So we were just so, it was so fantastic as they were telling us about the great work you did, we just wanted to do a little something extra for you. So please make sure you visit Rich before you leave. In addition to that, we're also here because we have our OCPS debit card program. One of the things that we love doing is being able to give back to the district. We found lots of ways, I always tell Dr. Jenkins, if she has any good ideas, let me know. We recently sponsored a bunch of students from Colonial High School to be able to go see Hamilton. We also have our debit card program where this year, we were able to donate $48,365.25 to the district. Since we started doing this program, it's $496,000 we've been able to donate to the district. We like tying it to the debit card because we want to be able to do the donations without it having to be someone getting in debt. So these are just cards, and we've worked very closely with your staff to design the cards, where we've got each one of the high schools on a card. For every time somebody uses a card, we get to do a donation to the schools, and this so far added up to almost half a million dollars. So I just want to thank you guys for being a fantastic partner of ours. We love working with you, and it's been a great partnership from our end.
Well, thank you. And in addition to the contribution that you make in our partnership, I also wanted to recognize Eddie Sanabria for his service on the foundation board. Thank you for your service, thank you for allowing him to participate. This is a perfect partnership, I hope. I hope you feel the same.
Thank you, we definitely do.
So tonight, we're also celebrating four proclamations. The first proclamation is a proclamation for February 28, 2019, as Digital Learning Day here in Orange County Public Schools. Our second proclamation is Scott Evans. Is Scott here with us? If Scott, if you'll come to the podium, our second proclamation, Scott will receive the proclamation and make a few comments, I hope, but the proclamation is proclaiming March 2019 as Youth Visual Performing Arts Month in Orange County Public Schools. Scott, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. I'm here to speak in celebration of the Visual and Performing Arts Month proclamation. Nine years ago, OCPS initiated an effort to bring arts access equity to students across this district. Three years later, with the help of the school board, superintendent, principals, and this community, OCPS reached an important milestone proclaiming 100% access to all arts, to all OCPS students. As a result, OCPS now outshines the state average of 57% with a 66% arts enrollment rate. Even more impressive is the fact that this enrollment bright spot reaches all-race subgroups. Of our three major enrollment subgroups, we have narrowed the enrollment gap between white, Hispanic, and black students to within 4 percentage points of each other. Our commitment to the arts goes beyond improving access, but also focuses on quality and high achievement. Recently, OCPS demonstrated this focus by leading the five largest urban Florida school districts by having the highest number of students accepted to the elementary all-state orphan ensemble. In addition, OCPS secondary chorus teachers and students not only topped the five largest school districts with the number of students accepted into all-state choirs, but actually had the highest number in the entire state. The National Association for Music Merchants recognized these efforts by naming OCPS as one of the 2018-2019 best communities for music education in the country. Student artwork can be seen across this community in places such as the Orlando International Airport and the Orlando Museum of Art, as well as community partner calendars and rain barrels. You can also enjoy some of our advanced placement student artwork around the walls of this room, which is on a rotating gallery curated by the Visual Performing Arts District Team. Starting next week, over 300 pieces of student artwork will be on display in the RBELC Lobby Gallery as part of our Youth Visual Performing Arts Month celebration. And in addition, over 3,000 student art pieces will be on display at the Winter Park Sidewalk Art Festival coming up in just a couple of weeks. If you want to see here and experience our incredible theater and dance students, then look no further than the Take Me to the Show calendar found on the OCPS website. There you will find hundreds of opportunities to attend a show, watch a performance, and experience the artistic brilliance of our students. On behalf of the students, teachers, and arts community, I thank the school board and district leadership for having the courage and the conviction to provide arts opportunities for all OCPS students. We should be all very proud of the fact that our district is able to provide students quality sequential standards-based arts instruction in dance, music, theater, and visual arts. March is the perfect time to honor that work and commitment as we celebrate Youth Visual and Performing Arts Month. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you. Our next proclamation is a proclamation for March as the National Social Work Month in Orange County Public Schools. And with us today to speak to that issue, we have two speakers. We have, and I'm going to mess up your name and I'm going to apologize ahead of time, Luchard Darius? Am I, come on up, and then you can correct me, okay? And then with Luchard, we have Carrie Johnston. Come on up and more properly introduce yourself, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of OCPS school social workers, we would like to thank the board and for recognizing our profession with this proclamation for School Social Work Month. We would also like to extend our appreciation to our Senior Director of Student Services, Mary Bridges, and our Director Carl Sousa for this opportunity and their ongoing support. I am Luchard Darius, the President of Orange County Educational School Social Work Association.
My name is Carrie Johnston. I'm the president of our State Association, Florida Association of School Social Workers. We are both licensed clinical social workers who have served OCPS for over 10 years. We're also members of the Social Work Best Practice Committee, which primary purpose is to provide information, guidance, and evidence-based standards for best practice for school social workers in Orange County. Currently, there are 54 culturally diverse school social workers throughout the district who are ready and available to attend to the needs of our roughly 212,600 student body. School social workers have vivaciously embraced the school social work practice model, which focuses on providing evidence-based social and emotional interventions, assisting students with mental health services, promoting school climate and culture conducive to student learning and teaching excellence, and maximizing access to school-based and community-based resources in order to provide both academic, social, and behavioral outcomes.
Perhaps you may ask, what does this all mean? In a nutshell, it simply means that we are there. Whether we are facilitating small social skills group, conducting a classroom lesson on bullying, or consulting with teachers, or meeting with parents in hopes of increasing their understanding of trauma impact, anxiety, suicidal symptoms, or depression, we are there. Sadly, when local news reporters intensely proclaim tragedies involving children and their families, school social workers silently hug on their pillows and awaits on emails, texts, and even phone calls from our administrators, who then instruct us on how to proceed in responding to yet another crisis, we are there. Before students with autism spectrum disorder, intellectual disabilities, emotional behavioral disorders become eligible to receive exceptional student services, social developmental history reports, and standardized assessment and adaptive behaviors are required, we are there.
Precisely. We do wear many hats. We are there as mental health counselors, advocates, evaluators, leaders, consultants, and more importantly, as change agents. Therefore, we will continue to be there at the forefront. We will be there to wear those many hats as the strength of our profession.
We will continue to be there to see each child as a whole and to persistently remind each one of them in the courageous, encouraging words of Christopher Robin. You are braver than you believe, stronger than you seem, and smarter than you think. Again, it has been an honor to share this moment with you, and we sincerely thank you for this acknowledgement of our profession, an amazing profession, and we want to thank all of our colleagues who are here as support.
Can we get them to stand?
Thank you.
Are you recognized?
Thank you.
Why don't you, why don't you all come on up with your colleagues, and as you're coming up, just the board would like to shake your hands for the work you do every day. We're recognizing you in the month of March, but I want you to know that there isn't a day that goes by that every member of this board doesn't recognize the valuable work that you're doing in our schools. Thank you all so much, and I think, I think sometimes we forget the personal toll that social work takes on those who are in the arena every day, so thank you. We have one more proclamation to recognize and celebrate this evening, and that's the proclamation for March 2019 as Purchasing Month in Orange County Public Schools. I believe, is Mr. Pacheco here?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheco, you want to come forward just so that we can thank you and your team for that? I'm not going to put you on the spot and ask you to make a speech, but I did want to thank you, and I know the board wants to thank you, for all the work that goes in making sure that our procurement process goes the way it needs to. It's extremely important for our credibility in the community, it's extremely important for the, to continue to have the relationships that we have with vendors when they know that they can come to Orange County Public Schools and do business and affair and ethical environment, but it's also extremely important to our children that the contracts that we're securing are done with the best possible service at the lowest possible price. Not an easy thing to do. I want to congratulate you and thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, board member, superintendent. We appreciate it. Basically, what you said is so true. The support that you give us is what allows us to really achieve those savings. As you can see from the proclamation that we put forward in front of you today, this team is a team that was in charge of buying about $800 million worth of goods and services. And by doing so, they did it by saving $44 million to the district, so that makes sure that that is reinvested on our schools. And also, something that has to be highlighted, that $69 million of those, of those $800 million that we were able to procure, were done with minority, local, and veteran business enterprises. So that is great. Tonight, we have two team members from our procurement team. First of all, let me introduce Robert Wannenberg, he's the Senior Director, if you could please stand up.
Stand up and be recognized, thank you.
Yeah, and David Wheeler, he's the Director of our contracting offices as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Dr. Jenkins, do we have any newly appointed administrators to recognize?
We do, Madam Chair. Members of the board, we have two. Robert Walker was dean at Bridgewater Middle School. He will be the new Assistant Principal at Howard Middle School.
My thanks to Chair Jacobs, the board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for the opportunity to serve Howard Middle School. I'd like to recognize my mentor, Mr. Andrew Jackson. I'd also like to recognize my parents, Sonya and Coleman, and my fiancee Alex for their love and support. Thank you to the Howard Middle team and Principal Beckler, who came out tonight to welcome me. Finally, thank you to my Bridgewater family and Principal Jackson, who are here tonight to give me a great send-off and wish me well on my new adventure.
Next, we have Patrice Anderson, Acting Assistant Principal at Andover, now officially the Assistant Principal at Andover Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for this opportunity to serve at Andover Elementary. I'd like to recognize my professional mentors, Dr. Tremble, Dr. Pringle, Ms. Clayton, and Ruth Velazquez. I'd also like to thank and introduce my family members that are with me this evening, my husband Paul, my son Bryce, Cameron, and Jalen. And finally, thank you to the Andover Elementary team members and Principal Angela Clayton, who came out to welcome me this evening. Thank you.
Well, congratulations. We're looking for nothing but greatness out of you, so no expectations out of this group. We appreciate all you've already done, thank you. All right, moving on, we have a, you know what? This is the time when everybody who has joined us, most of them have already left, but anybody else who doesn't have to stay around, we would invite you to excuse yourself unless you just want to hang out for the rest of the night with us, in which case we'll try to make it entertaining. No, I saw that family there with the little ones. Those children were awesome, so well behaved, but they deserve a break.
And all those smart high school students, they have to get home to study.
Yes, yeah. You got that right.
If you don't get those grades without, lots of work.
All right, next, we have a strategic plan update. I can tell you, Dr. Jenkins, I'm very much looking forward to this, so I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce your staff.
Thank you. Tonight, our strategic plan update is around social-emotional learning, known as SEL. Let me call to the podium Mary Bridges, Senior Director of Student Services, and she will introduce those others who will be presenting.
Welcome, Ms. Bridges.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, school board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and staff for the opportunity to present and share information related to the OCPS strategic plan as it relates to social-emotional learning. Joining me today are Anna Williams-Jones, Director of Mental Health Services, and Jennifer Sasser, Associate Superintendent for Research, Accountability, and Grants. Our goal today is to describe practices supporting social-emotional learning in OCPS and provide an overview of the Character Lab Research Network. As a result of the tragedy at Parkland last February, social-emotional learning and mental health services became a large focus in the state of Florida. To understand how to best serve children, it's important to see the whole child and all the components that make a healthy student. Mental health support and social-emotional learning are two areas that assist in creating a healthy student. Positive behavior supports, academics, and physical fitness also contribute to a healthy student. Tonight's presentation discusses the social-emotional learning and mental health supports that OCPS currently has to assist students. Social-emotional learning is the process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. Character education, conflict resolution, de-escalation, self-regulation, suicide prevention, and restorative justice are all components of the social-emotional learning curriculum. OCPS has several programs that deliver social-emotional learning curriculum. Last fall, OCPS began offering a health course to all students kindergarten through fifth grade. This is a 25-minute-a-week course that includes social-emotional learning curriculum, character education, exercise, and nutrition. Schools utilize Curriculum Resource Materials, or CRMs, or other research-based social-emotional learning curriculums. or other research-based social emotional learning curriculums such as Second Step. The Kindness Challenge is a program offered to students in grades four through eight and has activities to increase social emotional competencies and foster a caring culture. Last fall, OCPS received Alkalis for having the highest number of schools participate in the nation. Eight of our middle schools participate in the Holocaust Center's Upstanders Program. This program uses Holocaust education to show students the importance of standing up for a person if they are being bullied. Our current college and career program, Naviance, has a social emotional learning component also. They now provide college, career, and life readiness lessons, which include helping students learn about their strengths, interests, emotional intelligence, grit, self-awareness, and informed decision-making. The Sandy Hook Promise Foundation's Start With Hello program asks students, educators, parents, and other community leaders who interact with children to take steps in class, the lunchroom, and/or on the bus to be inclusive and connected. The program is simple. If you see someone alone, reach out and help. Just start with hello. The Sandy Hook Promise Foundation's Signs of Suicide encourages individuals in crisis to seek help and also uses peer-to-peer messaging that encourages students to act, which is acknowledge, care, and tell an adult. This program is for middle and high school youth, educators and school administrators, parents, caretakers, and any adult in close contact with young people. These two programs will be implemented through a Train the Trainers model. The Sandy Hook Promise Foundation members will train the mental health staff, who will then provide training and support to schools and students for program implementation. The Mental Health Services Department increased in personnel and services due to Senate Bill 7026. Senate Bill 2076, I'm sorry, 7026 allocated additional funds to school districts to enhance their mental health services. This allocation requires districts to use 90% of the funds to provide mental health assessments, diagnosis, intervention, treatment, and recovery services for students with a mental health need. It also requires the district to coordinate or become the case manager between the student's primary care provider and other mental health professionals from the district or outside community agencies. In response to the legislation, OCPS hired additional employees to provide direct services to students. We increased our traditional psychologist from 89 to 94 and increased the number of licensed mental health counselors from 11 to 27. We also hired learning community support personnel. Each of the five traditional learning communities were assigned one mental health social worker, one mental health psychologist, and one mental health support specialist. The five support specialists are supervised by a mental health behavior analyst. This student services support model illustrates the supports provided to schools and students as it relates to social emotional learning and mental health services. At a school, if a teacher or staff member, administrator, parent, or peer have a concern regarding a student, they bring that concern to the school counselor or safe coordinator. This person becomes the case manager for this student. The counselor or safe coordinator then collaborates with the student services itinerant team for that school. The itinerant team is a psychologist, social worker, and licensed mental health counselor assigned to the school. The counselors and the itinerant team may provide individual counseling, group counseling, social emotional learning groups, or may refer the student to outside counseling or outside resources. Additionally, each learning community has a mental health social worker to assist with threat assessments, a psychologist to assist with mental health assessments, and the mental health support specialist to assist with behavior. Now, Anna will discuss the professional development resources we provide.
Good evening. Senate Bill 7026, all, excuse me. Senate Bill 7026 also discussed the need for mental health training for district personnel, school faculty, staff, parents, and students. The state recommended professional development training is the Youth Mental Health First Aid Program. This six-hour training is recommended for all personnel who directly support the mental health needs of student, and it is recommended for members of the school-based threat assessment team. This team includes the administrator, an employee with counseling expertise, and a law enforcement officer. The student services team is in the process of training the following employees with Youth Mental Health First Aid: psychologist, social workers, district mental health counselors, school counselors, safe coordinators, school resource officers, and the administrators that conduct the threat assessment team meetings. OCPS currently has 16 certified youth mental health first aid trainers on staff. Other mental health trainings that are provided by the team are trainings for the Threat Response Protocol, which is threat to self, or suicide, self-harm, Mental Health 101, Trauma-Informed Care, Zones of Regulation, and Play Therapy. The student services department continues to look for community partners and additional resources for students. For the 19, for the 2019-20 school year, we are partnering with UCF to allow six of their social worker graduate interns to assist with our community schools. Three will work at Evans High School, and three will work at the OCPS Academic Center for Excellence. An additional grant that is currently pending with the Orange County Government would provide a full-time social worker at two additional elementary schools with need. Positive behavior supports are also a necessary component for a healthy student. The Mental Health Services Team assists with the training of positive behavior interventions and supports for schools. The Florida Diagnostic and Learning Resource System, or FIDLERS, provides CHAMP's training to any educator in OCPS. CHAMP's is a classroom management system primarily used in the elementary and middle school levels. Great Beginnings Classroom Management Training is available to all teachers new to OCPS. The Exceptional Student Education Department has behavior analysts to provide online classroom, who have provided online classroom management training modules for all employees. Each learning community has an ESE behavior analyst that works with both ESE and regular education students. At this time, Jennifer will discuss the Character Lab.
Character Lab is a nonprofit organization that was founded in 2013 by Dr. Angela Duckworth, author of Grit and psychology professor at the University of Pennsylvania, Dave Levin, co-founder of the Knowledge is Power Program, or KIP, charter public schools, and Dominic Randolph from Riverdale Country School. The Research Network was established as a consortium of schools and top scientists to create and test many great ideas for how to support the development of character and well-being in young people. In 2017, Orange County Public Schools connected with Character Lab and became the Research Network's founding district partner. In order to make action research possible, OCPS and Character Lab collaborated and established a data use agreement in order to provide an avenue for evidence-based research to be conducted within our own schools. The Character Lab Research Network seeks to bridge the gap between science and practice. Character Lab is not a curriculum, nor is it a designated, designated set of programmatic materials. It is a collaborative partnership that brings dynamic research into our classrooms. According to many research studies, overwhelming scientific evidence shows that character strengths are important to the success and well-being of students and their communities. Although character strengths are considered to be malleable, surprisingly little is known about how they can be intentionally cultivated within our students. Character Lab's research focuses on various dimensions of character represented by the strengths of heart, mind, and will. The interpersonal strengths of heart, also known as the giving strengths, include gratitude, empathy, and purpose. The intellectual strengths of mind are known as the thinking strengths and include curiosity, creativity, and zest, or finding and sharing excitement in what you do. Additionally, the interpersonal strengths of will, known as the doing strengths, include grit, self-control, and self-regulation. The graphic depicted here shows how action research plays out within the Character Lab Research Network partnership. There are often legal, technological, communication, and logistical burdens on schools that make school-based research quite difficult. The Character Lab Research Network aims to reduce these barriers so that educators and researchers can collaborate more effectively, to reduce these barriers so that educators and researchers can conduct research that is aligned with schools' needs, to engage educators in the development of these research projects, and to share best practices for what really works with both schools and stakeholders. To the far left are the researchers, who provide the studies and activities related to these dimensions of character strength, in which students will participate. These activities come in various forms, including surveys, open-ended response items, short video clips, and gamified tasks. The network includes scientists from universities such as the University of Pennsylvania, the University of Chicago, Stanford, Duke, Harvard, Florida State, and New York University. This network connects our students with world-class researchers, such as Dr. Angela Duckworth, Dr. Carol Zweck, known for her focus on growth mindset, as well as Dr. Todd Rogers, known for his work on public policy and behavioral science through Harvard University. To the far right are the schools that participate in this network. Schools contribute student data that result from responses gathered through participation in these studies. Research activities are delivered directly to students on their laptops through Launchpad and take approximately one class period to complete. Each school participating in the network has an assigned school research lead, who are classroom teachers, counselors, or assistant principals. Their primary responsibility lies with coordinating character research projects for the year. These SRLs join video calls with the researchers and attend onsite meetings with Character Lab. With each opportunity, school research leads are able to take insights learned through the network back to their teachers and the leaders at their schools. As part of this research network, scientists are better able to refine their best ideas through the evidence collected and are able to learn what works, what works in order to better develop resources that can be used within our classrooms. Character Lab consistently communicates with the researchers, the district, and our schools to refine the implementation process and continuously improve character development. The collaborative partnership between OCPS and Character Lab includes research activities, insights, and various learning opportunities. Research activities happen during the year through interviews and focus groups with individual teachers, school administrators, and students. Pilot studies are carried out at a subset of schools or within classrooms to test the administration of the study, research activities, or system functions on a small scale. School-wide studies are conducted at least twice a year and full-scale administration of student research activity. This past month, we had 33,553 students participate in these studies. One activity students may encounter includes a random assignment study regarding the power of giving advice. The researchers examine whether students are asked to give advice and prove their own academic performance. Students are asked to advise others on how to persevere through challenges and excel in school. For example, a student might be asked, as part of the activity, to write down about what advice they'd give another student for how to avoid procrastinating. The researchers are testing whether advising others raises a student's GPA above and beyond doing nothing at all. Their hypothesis is that the intervention will have the strongest effect on students who are at greatest risk of academic failure. At the conclusion of the research, snapshots and summaries at the school and district level are provided to offer preliminary findings and emergent insights from the research. These often include highlights of student responses and visual depictions of data results. For example, snapshots provided in the fall of 2018 included student aggregate information regarding topics such as time spent on social media and student relationships with their teachers. Various learning opportunities are also offered through this partnership. Online webinars are conducted as ongoing professional development. And over the past two years, researchers and staff from Character Lab have visited with our school and district leaders in support of this work. This past summer, school research leads participated in the Character Lab Educator Summit, which is designed to give teachers the knowledge and skills they need to help all students develop character strengths. Character Lab has also offered opportunities for our students to become more engaged in the research by allowing them to participate in summer student internships. This past year, we had two high school students apply and participate in this experience from Boone High School. There are currently a total of 34 OCPS secondary schools participating in the Research Network. Schools were selected based on interest expressed and through a representative sample of middle and high schools across learning communities. In 2017-18, 25 schools were included in the launch of this project. This year, nine additional schools were added and are denoted by an asterisk after their name in the table on the slide. Within these schools, students in grades eight through 12 participate in the activities throughout the year. In alignment with our data use agreement, the studies that are conducted require students to be age 13 or older. The specific grade and age selection are intentional to allow for a robust sample of students while at the same time providing a smooth and integrated district-level implementation. As we continue to move forward, we're excited about our continued partnership with Character Lab, and we look forward to engaging in this ongoing research to inform character development and well-being for our students. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. And we'd like to now provide Dr. Jenkins with an opportunity to share additional comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, we think that's a pretty extensive summary. Certainly willing to answer any questions you might have and listen to your discussion.
Thank you. Any, uh, member good? Any comments?
That was great, and I am so excited about the investment that we're able to make in here. But I do have a few questions as we go through this process. On the students per mental health specialist and social workers, what's the ratio of students to those folks? And I know, I'm sure we're not at ideal because we've never had funding for it, and we're only increasing the funding, and then what's the ideal?
Right. And the ideal actually for both psychologist and social workers is 250 to 1, which is the same as counselors, which again is, is very difficult to get to. Right now, with our psychologists, they have two schools each, which allows them to be at those schools normally two days a week at each school. With the social workers, they have four to five schools each. And so, they are able to be at their school at least one full day. And then, with the district mental health counselors, now that we have 27, they're, they have about seven to eight schools. So, we've asked them to be at those schools either a half a day every week or a full day every two weeks.
So, when you say they're at schools, that's, it could be a K-5, a middle school, or a high school?
Right. We usually...
So, the ratios would be extremely high?
Yes.
Especially as we get into middle and high school?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. I knew the answer to that question, but I think it's, this is a great step. We're so grateful to have investment in this. But when we're really talking about root... We're so grateful to have investment in this, but when we're really talking about root causes of a lot of different things, whether it's academic success, social, emotional behavior, there has got to be more investment made at this level, and it can't come at the cost of core education and other services. Um, I, you know, Advent Health, Orlando Health, and Aspire will be releasing the community assessment report, the health community assessment report. Mental health, we know, in that report continues to be a very high cause, so I would suggest that we talk to them after that report comes out for further partners. I know we have the academic side, but there's certainly skillset partners that maybe we could have a JA model of, you know, of professionals that are willing to come in sanctioned by those organizations and give us additional support for our students. The, the other thing that came up today in a meeting as I was talking about some healthcare things is really looking at our registered nurses, and right now, we do not have registered nurses in all our schools, but oftentimes, the register nurse, or the nurse, and especially a registered nurse, can triage that mental health and social well-being of the child before anybody else can, because they see them no matter what. If they have a sniffle, if they have a cut, if they need a break from a class, they're walking in there, and so they're an excellent triage resource. And I know our foundation has been looking at trying to find that, some of our community has stepped up, but as we get more investment, that may be another way to use those dollars. And then the last thing that I've had many teachers and parents come to me about is, and this ties to mental health and the child's well-being and social-emotional learning, is getting rid of some of the centers that really caused the negotiation play in kindergarten because the standards have become so intense. Is there something that we can do in that, and even encourage pre-K providers and kindergarten providers to help build those play but tie in the social-emotional? I don't think there's an answer for that tonight, but if, if there's something to look at that could replace that, because they learn the negotiating skills, they learn how to share or stand up for what they want in a proper way, and the intensity on testing is certainly taking care of that. And I had one more question before my 24 seconds runs out, is snapshots, is that a test?
No, the snapshots are not a test. What they do is they are a summary with high-level information about how students responded to some of the items. For example, how many hours a day did they estimate that they were spending on social media? And so that way, our educators would have an understanding of kind of where they're coming from and learn how to best reach them.
Member Castor Dennel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions about Character Lab. So, I don't know, Dr. Sasser. I, I value action research and what information it can give us, especially if it helps teachers do a better job of relating to their kids and understanding them, but what, what specific data is being collected on our students? I, I have a concern, before I let you answer, that we are gathering sensitive information about students' social-emotional, um, needs, and I'm, I just want to make sure that we have a reassurance that we are protecting that information and that we're not collecting things that aren't really necessary. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. We have a data use agreement with Character Lab, and so they very clearly outline kind of their protections that they put in place, as well as that we do when we transfer information back and forth. No personal identifiable information is actually provided to them. It's through the activities that they're engaging in. So, for example, they may have a survey where they ask them on a scale of one to five, how, how do they feel about something? And so it's never connected back to a specific student. Information is always reported out in aggregate form when it is shared back. I can provide more information in terms of the documentation that Character Lab provides for you, but all of the, the data that is given to them is based on the intervention or activity that they're doing.
Okay, thank you. And what, um, what information are we providing to parents about this action research that their children are participating in? Do they have, um, the ability to opt out or, or to know what is being collected?
So, on the OCPS Research and Evaluation Department webpage, we actually have a page specifically for parents in the community. Character Lab has letters that have been available to the schools. The school research leads give those to teachers to share with the families at both the middle and high school level, to kind of explain what work that they're going to be doing, and the student has that option as well in different types of activities, whether they choose to participate or not. And so it is something that is completely optional, and as the students go through, they are, like, there are sections where it allows them to do gamified tasks or kind of play through games that will help them with kind of mindset activities without having to answer some of the open-ended response items, which are always related to one of the strengths that they're trying to build.
Okay, I, just as an aside, as a parent of, uh, high schoolers, I've never seen that. I don't know if it's not in our high school, is it in all high schools or just those ones that are listed?
Just in the ones that are listed on that slide. We started off with a smaller group of schools to kind of test this out in the first year. Additional schools expressed interest about participating, and all of the school research leads have been provided the documentation to share with their communities as they roll this out.
Okay, one final question. The information that you, that you learn, that is shared with just the, the school site and those teachers, or is it the overall, the whole district? How do we get, if we want to see what information was, uh, learned?
Absolutely. So, those are what the snapshots actually are, and those are provided at a school level, as well as a district aggregate level. And so each school receives a customized report that mirrors the district report but just has the data for their specific school, but we can provide those to you as well.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Member, Vice Chair Gordon.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Very good, very, very good, excellent, informative report, and I'm very pleased about the number of schools. I don't know if I missed when you will be adding more, I guess maybe when the budget increases. Um, I guess, Dr. Sasser, or either, well...
For Character Lab, there is no cost at the district level for the implement...
I'm sorry.
There's no cost at the district level for the partnership we have with Character Lab. Character Lab is funded through different grants that they receive. In terms of, we started off small just to make sure we worked through some of that.
I'm sorry, my mind is gone for a minute. I'm, I'm getting notes from my daughter up here. Okay, um, that, that's not what I'm asking for there. I'm so sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm asking about, I think Ms. Gould kind of covered some of it, but I'm concerned about when the other schools, when are they going to get involved, because we don't have all of the schools involved? And then I was really concerned about one of the schools making sure, because we know that the positive pathways. I, I noticed that you did add on the new schools, and I, it looked like you're saying, we have so many high schools, but our kids are coming from middle and high schools. So, I'm a little concerned if, if they're really strategically planted there that they could get those summits that you're talking about there. Okay, that, that's one concern, and then the next concern, I'm, I know we just can't take students out of school to go and help, but, but I do work in an environment that we do that, where some of the kids come in from the high school to work with us with a positive pathway-type school, that these students could kind of give them some type of positive reinforcement. So, let me see if I can get back to where I was here. I'm sorry. Okay, with the, the Character Labs, how often are the summits? And then the student internship, how is that working? And how do, how do they get involved? I think I kind of missed that.
So, for Character Lab, in terms of the schools that were selected, last year was our first year, this is our second year, and so Positive Pathways, this is their second year in terms of participating, and Character Lab's researchers actually went to that site to visit with them and to speak to their students, and it was well-received at that school, and some of the students there specifically said they've never been asked about some of these things and how their perceptions, and they felt honored that the researchers would come and speak to them. We know that all of our students would benefit from participating in these research studies, and as the network continues to grow, there may be an opportunity to expand the number of schools that we're including. Character Lab is still also in some of their initial years of implementation, so so many researchers they've partnered with, so there's, for each research study, you have so many participants that they, they're looking for to kind of maximize the effect.
Okay, since we know that everybody in, in the Positive Pathway really, um, need some type of mental health assistance and assistance period in character building, what is your reinforcement team like there? Because I know I've gone to Dr. Jenkins and asked her, you know, for additional administrative assistance, and then we talked about with the social workers bridges and, and being able to get that in there, because we don't want them to go back out and air and, and get in, and then we would like to use these students as models, saying that they're, so, I mean, you know, what are their abilities that they could say, "I was there." I'm in that type of situation where I am now, where my students, they come back and let the students that's there now in the behavior school, let them know, "Listen, you could do that, that is another avenue," and I know that's asking you all to do a lot, but since the money is not always there to supply, you would be surprised how many students that have been through that program are willing to come back and share, and I didn't know that was a part of the student internship. Are you using any of the Positive Pathway students to come back and motivate those students that are already there?
That's a great piece of information to kind of take back. The, the way the internships work is Dr. Duckworth and her team from the University of Pennsylvania, they coordinate these summits. Last year was the first time we were invited, it's a summer, it's a summer internship opportunity. So, not only do our educators go there, but the students that were selected through an application process got to participate with the educators who were there, and as well as they got to learn and give feedback on the development of some of these interventions. They are going to be expanding it this summer, coming summer as well.
Okay, but I don't want to miss the boat here. Are our Positive Pathway students being allowed that opportunity to go and be in that type of training?
So, the application is open to all students?
That's not, it's either yes or no. You don't know, just say if you don't, I mean, it's very important because, I'm just saying this, it's very important because these are the students that need it right now, and we want to keep Positive Pathway on a positive path, and the type of students we have, we want to make them leaders. So, we want them to lead Positive Pathway with a very positive statement that they are able to go out, that they are able to go to these workshops that you're talking about, and not just regular high school kids, you know, that did not get expelled, all right? I did not get in trouble. I'm just saying, use your base, and let that base go into some of our schools and speak. And, and the reason why I'm, I'm just suggesting that, because it would make a very positive impact. I'm, I'm telling you, when the kids come back and they talk themselves, even like a student is, and I'm watching my time, like our, like our 13, well, we got kindergarten all the way up to 22, but our 13 to 17-year-olds, like some of them, you know, we get a group and let them talk and share, but our 18-year-old, they're grown. They might be living with their parents, it may be emancipated, they may be working on their own, they may be homeless or whatever, but they're in a different type of category, and their whole demeanor changes. So, that, I'm, I'm just concerned about using our Positive Pathway kids to go back into the high schools and speak to those students.
And Dr. Sasser, if I could...
And attend the conference.
If I, if I could, if we could revisit the, the question, and I just, I'd like to understand the answer better, because you're using terminology that I'm not completely familiar with, so can you give us, try to give us that answer again?
So, in reference to, I'm, I'm, can you clarify which part you'd like a response to?
The question was, is this, is this opportunity for learning available to our students at Positive Pathways?
Yes.
The answer is yes, okay.
But, but she says they have to sign up. I didn't hear, anything could be open. Are they being encouraged to become the leaders? That's the point.
I understand. I was actually a little confused myself because I didn't know that, whether that meant the school itself had to be a part of this or whether it was a student choice. So, I was also asking to further clarify, just for my, for my own benefit, and assuming there might be other members, new members that might have had that same question. So, I am...
Madam Chair.
Yes, by all means.
I might be able to add some clarification, and Ms. Gordon, I remember Gordon, I think you bring up an important point that we can certainly take back and work on. So, the application for the Character Lab Summer Summit is open to all, but whether or not we're getting large participation, even in application from students in Positive Pathways, we can certainly work on. And then I think there might be an opportunity for us to try to replicate some of those initiatives or a, or a summit here in Orange County as well that might help some of our students.
Awesome.
But I believe, what, what did we, what did we, how many students did we have that actually went to their summer summit?
Two.
It's very limited, but we can replicate something here locally.
So, imagine your base, you got to build your base, you got to work your base, you got to get your money out of it.
We'll work on that. Member Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Very good, very good.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Absolutely. Um, next up, we have Member Gala. Sorry, I skipped myself.
I was going to say...
My questions, I think, have been asked. Go ahead.
Um, okay, I have just two questions, so indulge me for a minute. Um, on the social-emotional learning, so, this is Ms. Perd. So, you said that social-emotional learning takes place for 25 minutes in all K through five classrooms, so I guess my question is, is how much time are we spending in the six through 12 classrooms on social-emotional learning? And do we use curriculum as, do, do we intertwine curriculum in everything that we teach? So, is there like social-emotional learning when we teach math or social studies? Do we incorporate it throughout, or is it just that set of time that we do social-emotional learning?
Yeah, that, that's a great question, and right now, in, in the middle schools, we do have the Child Safety Matters Program, which is safety, it's also, uh, both on bullying and, and those type things. It's three lessons, it's a, a program from the state that's sponsored by the state, but it's three lessons that go into your sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and usually that's a social studies class. So, most of our social-emotional learning is push-in. At the middle schools, we've got the Upstanders Program, which again is, that's a field trip to the Holocaust Center. Then there's lessons in the classrooms about, you know, standing up for others and those type things. In answering for it being entwined in the curriculum, we actually have been having discussions with our curriculum department and health department on how we can, as we're updating the curriculum resource materials in all of our courses, that we could have someone from curriculum and from our mental health or our student services side trying to infuse into those curriculum resource materials, these social-emotional learnings. At this time, we have not done that.
I understand there's a couple of free services that we can use, that other districts use, like Harmony is one of the curriculum resources that others use to kind of entwine with the regular curriculum, and I, I met the Teacher of the Year from Florida.
Yeah, yeah, that's still a separate program.
It's still a separate...
Right, it's, it's similar to the second step and the other curriculums that we have, yes.
Okay. So, but we, we don't know how much time, like, we really, truly, we don't spend a set amount of time in our K through 12s per week on social-emotional learning.
No, not at the moment.
Um, and then my other question is on the safe coordinators, what are, what are their credentials? What, what is required to be a safe coordinator in Orange County?
Right now, they are, it's just a resource teacher, so they are required to be certified in some subject area, and then once they become safe coordinators, we have monthly meetings where we do the additional training. So, our safe coordinators have been trained in that youth mental health first aid, they've been trained in the threat response. Every month, we have people coming in, doing the different trainings for them to help them be that case manager. So, again, with safe coordinator... So again, with Safe Coordinators, if they're not certified counselors or licensed mental health counselors or social workers, they would be that case manager who would, if a student has a concern, they would go to that person, and then they would turn to that itinerant team, the psychologist, the social worker, the licensed mental health counselor, and then they'd work together to make sure they get the counseling services.
How much training do they receive? Like, is it a monthly training for a couple hours?
Yeah, Anna can talk to that, because they've-
Thank you.
-started doing this.
So we actually started the work with the Safe Coordinators last year. And so there is a three-and-a-half-hour training every month. Some of the training is conducted by the licensed mental health counselors that are already on staff with the district. But then we also bring in community partners who talk about human trafficking and who come in from United Way, because they are a resource. We do not expect our Safe Coordinators to provide a mental health service in terms of a counseling service. But they are that designated person on all of our middle and high school campuses that is the first line of defense for students. So when they go to the Safe Coordinator, or if a teacher refers a student to the Safe Coordinator with a concern, they're the folks that we train in our mental health referral process. We have 15 community partners that work with OCPS to provide individual counseling for students, so they know how to make those referrals. They know how to access all of the support that a student may need. And of course, in the threat response process, if we have a student that's in crisis, they know how to activate that, so that we can get the school team involved to provide that support and make determinations about what students need. But it is monthly.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Member Bird.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question goes to the mental health professional development. The program Youth Mental Health First Aid Training, it says it's recommended by the Florida Department of Education for personnel working directly with students' mental health needs. But then I noticed, when we list those people, that the teachers aren't really in that list. And I know teachers have so much already to do. But my question is, you know, they're kind of the first line, and so I'm wondering what kind of, what kind of mental health training are we providing for them to help our students?
So at this time, we're actually waiting on response from DOE. As part of the legislation, they indicated that every OCPS employee would have a mental health awareness training. So we haven't tried to roll out anything to all staff, because DOE has said that that is a responsibility that they're taking. We do, however, offer monthly Mental Health 101, which is a half-day training that's on our Canvas site, that any of our OCPS staff can sign up for, which goes through the signs and symptoms of mental illness. And so that's available this summer. We are planning to do some youth mental health first aid training opportunities that would be available for teachers, because it's not going to then interrupt instructional time. And so we're working out as calendar for that, because we know it's a six-hour training, so we wouldn't require, you know, a full day away from instruction. So hopefully, once we get more information from the state about the program that they're expecting all teachers and staff members to participate in, then we will be able to be more consistent about what we're doing. But we didn't want to have people do things twice. And so what we're going to do is not going to meet the letter of what the state wants. We wanted to give them an opportunity to be at the forefront with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, next, we have Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, thank you so much for the presentation. Do we have a Mental Health Awareness Week at the district level?
So there's not a Mental Health Awareness Week, but in May, there is a Child Mental Health Day. It's May 10th, I believe, this year. And so we will be writing a proclamation for the board to approve, so that we can recognize that. And we will work with our schools to have activities around positive mental health.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for the information. I think that the mental health awareness is also important for teachers as well, and parents, and the community. So is there any possibility that we can develop something, a fair or conference, or maybe, you know, something that we can engage the community to make them aware that this is not, that is, this is something that could be very common in our families, in the school system, in the community, so they don't feel isolated? They feel that they have that help? Or maybe they can connect themselves with initiatives of services that we already have in the, in the system? Because we have, we don't have certain schools that have this wonderful opportunity. So we have something to make them more aware of this situation.
So part of what we would like to do this summer is to offer the youth mental health first aid training for parents as well. Because since we have our own trainers here in the district, it's no cost to us to extend this to our broader OCPS family. So that is an agenda that we are, we are working on. And then in addition to that, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, NAMI, they do an Ending the Silence presentation in our high schools, which is student-driven, but they also have a parent component. And they did actually come to the November Parent Academy and present that presentation. And they are willing to partner with us to provide more community support.
Awesome. Thank you for such valuable information. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes all of the questions and comments. Let me end by thanking all of you. A wonderful presentation and a great job that you're doing here on behalf of our students. Thank you. Okay, next up on our agenda, we have at this time, no, no members of the public wishing to address the board. So Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are chairman members of the board withdrawing our items 8.02, 8.03, 8.04, and 13.01. Might also mention, if you would refresh your computers, Personnel Agenda had an oversight on it. Employee CM was suspended with pay, not without pay. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair finds cause to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda? Motion by Vice Chair Gordon, second by Member, you, you motioned it.
I motioned it.
You motioned it?
I moved it.
And it's seconded by Member Cobert. And with no public comments, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by, was that Member Gold, Gordon, Cobert? Member Cobert, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Gold. I heard a second out of my left ear, that's all I can tell you. Wonderful. We'll move on then to informational items. Dr. Jenkins, do we have any informational items?
Just a couple, Madam Chair. For the board's information, on Saturday, we were part of memorializing a former Cove chairperson, Edgerton Vandenberg. Wanted to mention, on behalf of our current Cove members, how greatly he will be missed. He was on Cove from 2011 to 2015, and was actually chair for four of those years. And so just wanted to publicly, again, acknowledge Edgerton Vandenberg for his time in his service. Cove being such a tremendous part of our sales tax as they provide oversight. Construction Oversight and Value Engineering Committee, we believe they helped bring great confidence to our community, and certainly helped us to push through renewal of that half penny sales tax. And so I wanted to mention again our thanks to, and condolences to the Vandenberg family. Secondly, wanted to mention, in a related matter, some folks have wondered about when we will have our facilities review meeting. That is actually scheduled for April 16th. That is usually a very lengthy work session. We will talk about things, including reuse, capital improvement, and much, much more. An update to the mother of all charts, as we've always referred to it, that helps to drive our planning for the next year in our facilities department. So April 16th is that actual work session. Thirdly, wanted to mention, so folks don't think we have just totally disregarded it, that we are still continuing to look at high school start times. Staff have been developing a couple of optional models. We've continued our research, actually spoken to other districts, including Tampa and Seattle, looking at cost models as well, and as well as those models that may be cost-neutral. And board members continue to have conversations with their constituents and in their communities around this whole issue of school start time. I simply wanted to publicly state that we are still having discussions and going through development and research on this matter, and we'll have more discussion of it in the near future. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Thank you for publicly, I know the board members are aware of the work that's going on, but I think it's good for the public to know as well. So thank you for that update. And now we'll hear from our district, School District General Counsel, Mr. Rodriguez.
And Chair Members of the Board. Earlier this week, yesterday, we got a copy of a grand jury, I guess it's an approval by the State Supreme Court, that they are beginning proceedings in several districts. First of all, for clarity, none of those were cited as a Ninth Circuit, so their allegations there are taking place statewide. We will circulate a copy of that, but one in particular that was raised was the fourth one, which dealt with miscommunication of information regarding incidences at our schools. And I know that the chair had asked us to look into this previously. We're continuously still trying to get a final, this positive answer, and we expect to have a memo to the board members by the end of this week on that particular issue, particularly since now it's been heightened in the grand jury. But the simplest thing I can explain is that we have a system, SMS, which provides student information. And whenever there's an incident regarding student discipline, we enter that information into that system. We track it by putting the name of the student and their number, and that gets submitted to the state on a regular basis. There is no question that we are submitting information regarding our students to the state. Their issue, and the issue that was raised by our reporter previously, was that on occasions we are not reporting incidences that take place with non-students, or even individuals for which we have not identified who the offender is. So if someone comes and vandalizes our school, did we report that? If someone was arrested for having drugs and they're not a student, did we report that? Two things I can tell you will be at the conclusion of my memo, just to give you a sneak preview, is, first of all, I do not agree, at least it's my legal interpretation in looking at the information, that we are required to provide information about non-student discipline matters. Every reference in the statute is regarding information about student discipline and student safety. So to require us to basically submit information that is duplicative of what a government agency, a law enforcement agency would have, seems that it's not appropriate. We're trying to figure out where does that authority come for the DOE? And as best I can tell, there was a statute that said create a management system for data. They adopted a rule that said they're going to work with the districts, and ultimately they've created a system. And then they're using some coding system that identifies types of offenses. And now they've said, using this coding system, tell us about everything that happens at your schools. Well, with all due respect to the DOE, they have limited authority, and that authority is granted by the legislature. They cannot invent and add additional information requests that they would like to have us keep track of. So when, when the information is finalized, it may be a little bit of a flashpoint with what the DOE is telling and sharing with the media and with others. So I want to be careful in making sure we have all of the facts and all of the information, and not missing any rules, missing any statutes. But at the gist of it, it's the question of what is our duty and obligation? And we certainly have a duty and obligation to counter and capture information regarding students, whether they're disciplined or not, because that is our realm, our world. But as it comes to non-student offenders, we turn those over to law enforcement, and then there are records created by law enforcement and the prosecution and the judiciary, and those records would be available from other sources for the DOE, if that's what they're trying to track. So it's, it's, it's a little bit complicated, but I want to make sure we get it right. But given the grand jury had that fourth clause, I'm not, I don't think it's directed at us. I think across the state, the article was, a number of districts were not quote-unquote "reporting correctly." We want to make sure we're correct. The DOE, they're just as capable of making mistakes as I am. So someone is misinterpreting the law, and I'm confident that when we come through this, we'll be able to share that all the information we've reported has been reported. And finally, just to add, that our system, the SMS system, doesn't even allow for us to enter information about non-students. So we can't create a new profile for an adult that's not part of our system. Our new Skyward system may have that flexibility that kicks in in the fall, but again, it goes back to the question, the rule says you're going to develop a management system in conjunction with the districts. If that was the case, they would have recognized that not only our system, but many in the state don't have the capacity to add those additional offenders. So I'm, I'm just at a loss, because I don't think that, that jives with what we have been producing over the years. But we will get to the bottom and give you a report as soon as we can.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Please.
I apologize. It was, it was my oversight. When this gentleman was appointed, he was actually still in Osceola County, and they wouldn't let him go that night. But our new Chief Information Officer is actually in the audience. I want you to see him. Robert Curran, if you'd stand up. So glad, so glad to have him on board. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have any, we do, I think we have a report from our Chair of Legislative Affairs, Member Gala.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tomorrow morning, from 9:00 to 11:00, at the A. School, the Academic Center for Excellence, the Legislative Committee will be holding a delegation meeting with some of the senators and representatives from the Orange County delegation. And like I said, that will be from 9:00 to 11:00 at the A. Center. We'll be meeting for an hour to discuss our priorities. We have about three, Lyndon and I met today, and we identified three to four, maybe even five, key points that we wanted to discuss with the legislature. And immediately following that meeting will be a tour of the A. School. So we're, we're very excited to showcase that school. We're proud of it, and we can't wait for the legislators to, to take a tour. And then the other report I wanted to make is, we're having a Legislative Committee meeting on Thursday from 3:00 to 4:00. And currently, there is a Senate bill, it's 7030, and it was sponsored by the Senate Education Committee, that passed through that committee on February 12th, that allows for the arming of teachers. Last year's bill, 7026, had the language that excluded individuals who exclusively perform classroom duties from being armed. So what that meant was that only non-exclusive teachers would be allowed to participate in the Guardian program. Under this new bill, if passed, that changes a language that would allow any teacher with the approval of the school board to be armed. The previous school board was very adamant in their opposition to arm teachers. So I would like to ask staff to create some language for a resolution that states that Orange County School Board opposes any legislation that will arm our teachers here in, in Orange County. And I would like to bring that before the Legislative Committee on Thursday.
Thank you. Let me ask, I will not be able to be present on Thursday, unfortunately, I have a previous appointment. Is it, I don't know what our policy is in terms of supporting the resolution. I'd like to be on record right now, and throughout the campaign, we, those of us who were up for election or running for office had an opportunity to hear from each other and hear our positions. And it, of course, there's two different issues. There's the Guardian program, and then there's expanding the Guardian program to arm teachers. And my recollection of the, the new board members' position on this was opposition to arming our teachers. So I would love to see a resolution come before the board. I think that's an excellent idea. I know the, the previous board, again, my understanding that they had already taken a position on this, but, so I can't be there, but I am fully in support. And Mr. Rodriguez, if you can let me know between now and then, if there's some way, that by proxy, I probably can't, but if there's some way that I can sign on to that resolution. And I know we had taken a position at our last Legislative Committee meeting on the issue of asking the legislature to give local districts the authority to use their proportional share of the Guardian funds. And I thought that that was certainly, and as I expressed, and you were at the Channel Six Forum, but as I expressed there, I think that it makes a lot of sense, that communities will have different feelings and different needs, and that elected representatives are elected based a lot on their positions on things. And it makes sense to have this be a district choice. But I think it's unfair to a district that chooses to have certified law enforcement officers in lieu of having Guardians to be short-changed in the funding they get. And I thought that that position that we had taken as a committee, and that has subsequently been adopted by this board as part of our legislative agenda, made an enormous sense. So I think it was very, very helpful that we're on record on that, but I would also agree, having us formally on record on this would be very helpful. Madam Chair. Please.
So if we draft a resolution when it comes to the next board meeting, that would be the first opportunity for the board to publicly have a- the first opportunity for the board to publicly have a discussion, and then endorse that resolution on the position. And so, we can have that prepared for the next board meeting.
Of course.
For your discussion and consideration.
All right, thank you. Any, anything else to come before the board? Any policy issues to come before the board? Member Kestrel Dennel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to use this moment to kind of have the first chance to discuss, or at least to notice that we, there was a CTA Teacher Summit last week, and I know a lot of us attended, and we were not able to really comment at that time, but...
Because of the Sunshine Law. I want to be clear for the public that might hear us. It wasn't that they weren't willing to have us comment, it was that we were prohibited.
Right. We were prohibited from commenting, but I just want to kind of give my thoughts, my observations from that, the Teacher Summit. First of all, I want to thank all of those teachers who shared their opinions, or their observations, their experiences. Even in a setting among your peers, it's not easy to always share. There were kindergarten teachers, there were psychologists, there were English teachers/poets, there were career tech teachers, middle school teachers, so there was the whole range of professionals in the room, sharing. And what I learned, and what I also know, is that we have so many passionate, caring, talented, intelligent professionals working in our classrooms. They spoke about the love for their jobs, for their students, for their communities, for their schools. But, I also have to recognize some of the themes that were mentioned, just so that we're validating what they expressed. I don't want them to think that it just comes here, and we don't respond to it. But, there were many people who talked about not being compensated for their advanced degrees. And I realize that that's language in statute, or in the Department of Education, but maybe we can also address that, or learn more about those restrictions and limits, so that we can react appropriately, whether it's to appeal to the legislature on their behalf. Student discipline continues to be an area where teachers need support in helping their students. And I know that we have programs and policies in place, but there's still something that is, it's like, there's like an area in the school settings that is not really addressing the need fully, and it's actually affecting the instruction of other students. So, it's, that needs to be addressed, I believe. And many teachers spoke about the fear of speaking up, and that makes my heart hurt. I want there to be a sense among our professionals and our employees that we're all trying to solve problems, that we want to all, you know, we have to address what is going on. And I know these teachers want to work in collegial cultures, but they did kind of point fingers towards the top, and said, "It starts up here." So, we're at the top. We're kind of setting the culture. And I want to make sure that we are having discussions about that, and involving teachers in helping us to make their voices heard, because they can also help us help them. And I just took that away so much, it was just such an emotional night. And I know that some others wanted a chance to talk about that, but if we could involve teachers in some advisory groups, or in helping us to solve some of the problems that they identified, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. And I think the board's lit up, so I think that meeting has been on our minds. Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you. So, a couple of things, just to clarify. Wendy and I have conversations on a regular basis. In fact, we'll be going to another breakfast, try to have breakfast about once a month. You have to acknowledge that that was a limited group that was at that meeting, because we have 14,000 teachers. However, all of their issues, we take very seriously. That summary has already been passed on to your chief negotiator, for discussion at the bargaining table, as well as HR. The summary that I received, Wendy has provided for each of us a packet that has all of the information she gathered that night. I appreciate that. We can use that information with our chief negotiator. I always want to have a balanced understanding. So, I gave you memos, were placed on your desk, with the summaries from the area superintendent's random teacher roundtables, which would be less of a concentration, perhaps, than may have shown up at the union office. But, those random roundtable discussions have some similar concerns. They're not totally opposed, but I wanted you to have that copy. It came from all of our area superintendents, where they collect information from random roundtables. I elected this year not to do my roundtables with individual board members, because instead, we're going to do a more extensive polling of our teachers, because I want to get a better feel for 14,000 teachers, from an organization that has some scientific expertise. And so, we'll work more on that in the future, keep you informed on that as well. Nonetheless, Wendy knows I take her feedback seriously. We have a chief negotiator that is quite capable of working through committees in a collaborative bargaining model, that will work on those issues as well. I don't want you to think we are not concerned. I've already passed that feedback on to your chief negotiator.
Thank you. Vice Chair Gordon.
Well, Dr. Jenkins pretty much summed up both of them, because I had spoken with her earlier to see if we can get the comments from Wendy Dormel, the CTA President, and she's in the audience, and I do appreciate that. Some of us, there was a conflict of interest that day, and almost the time, it is a conflict, where it's always something scheduled with the school board. I do wish that we would get our meetings a little bit more together, so that there would not be half of the board here, and half of the board, leaving one event to get to another. That's very important, that we collaborate together, as we have done in previous years, past, that we were able to attend everything. One thing that I'm concerned about, I'm very impressed with both of the surveys, hearing comments that were very, very similar. However, I'm even, I'm talking with Dr. Jenkins in reference to, she is doing the, she does the roundtables, which are very, very effective in my community. I've attended all of them. I've not missed one of the Teachers Roundtable. I'm very excited about what happens in School Board District 5. However, I do get a lot of mail from other districts, even as I said up here today, I think you're known that, it's either because I am the African-American on the board, but it's not just African-American writing, it's people that are concerned. However, when I do get concerns, I do turn them over immediately to the superintendent and her professional staff, that they would handle it. But, I think that the teachers need to also know, and parents need to know, that there is some out, where the union is very effective in helping them, and all, because that's what we did in the past, and that the superintendent and her staff is immediately excited about helping them. With the Teachers Roundtable, this time, I think Dr. Jenkins is going to do a random survey sampling, and I'm asking some kind of way, if it's possible, if, since you're doing it that way this time, and you really have very good comments, and I do love a lot of the things that you put on here, and since I am an avid member of attending, you know, what is going well? That is always good to know. What is going well? What do you need as a teacher? That's what we want to know. What do you need? And how is planning time going? And when will I get a raise? That's basically what we are concerned about. And by watching the Legislature Committee this year, I see how everybody is just helping everybody get what they want, helping the charter schools get all of the little extra money that they want. It is kind of sad when you sit down and watch people just voted in, because if our state representative doesn't vote for them, to get water in Lake County, and pay for a pump, or all of the crazy things, the AME church, don't get mad with me ministers of my AME church, you know, you're all coming before, asking for $500,000, $93,000, the superintendent's in cahoot with them, and I'm saying it that, and that's where our money is going. And that's why we cannot get a decent salary. Something really needs to be done. I do hope that the teachers address salary a little bit more stronger, and what they plan to do with these legislators that are voting in their favorite thing, so that they can get their favorite part. It needs to get away from being the favorite thing. You vote for mine, and then I'll vote for yours. That really bothers me. So, I would love to hear from teachers that really want to fight the salaries, and see why we can't get them up. We talked about getting it up for $50,000 a year. We're almost there. We're almost there, and some kind of way, it's gotten wiped on the back burner. And the only person I've seen, I think a lady in the 4th grade, she's a 4th grade teacher, and I think she just finished her doctor's, some kind of degree, she received a very high degree, she's a 4th grade teacher. And she can't even get a raise, because it's not in her area of expertise. We need to turn that around. We need to change that. These are the type of things that I need to be hearing, coming from teachers of concern, because I know that the superintendent is addressing those needs, if they are there. I've seen them all covered, pretty much, very few needs left unattended for those roundtables that I did attend. But, I would like to see if there could be, and I don't want to over-flood you, but if you could work out something where there's another line, that those that did not randomly get picked, even if it has to go through the union, let them have their say, because some people are saying, "Well, I may not get picked, but I want to say this." So, where would they go? You know, to be anonymous, if they want to be anonymous. And then, one last thing, and a membership. I am an advocate for CTA membership. I've always done that, I've always been that. I am on the State Committee, I'm working in my county and Osceola, trying to get teachers to be members, because if we drop below a certain percent, we won't even have a voice. And people don't even realize that. So, right now, membership should be number one. And teachers got to come together. So, Miss, Madam Chair, thank you for giving me those 30 seconds extra.
Sorry, go ahead. Next, Member Colbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too very much appreciated the summit that the CTA put on. I've attended them over the last four years. I think this was one of the best that I've been to. Not only was it standing room only, but the comments were very solutions-oriented, it was well-thought-out feedback. I appreciated, it was no surprise to me that six of the eight sitting board members were able to come. I mean, not, normally, not everyone is able to come on a night like that. So, I was very, very proud of the board and the board members who came. And I just want you to know, and I want all of those teachers who bravely stood up and spoke to us that night, that we are working on your specific concerns. So, I know all of us took notes, I had three pages of notes, came back the next morning, immediately typed all of those notes up into a summary, went directly to the superintendent, and I know she has already been working on some of those things. So, I want you to know that we're working on them at a local level, the things that we can do better as a district, the district is working on, and at that state level. So, the advanced degrees was a big issue, and I know you have a lot of great comments that you've brought for us tonight. And we are meeting with our Central Florida delegation tomorrow, and as a matter of fact, Member Gallo and I sat down today, pulled that statute, it's 1012.22, Section 1C3. And we actually wrote and edited that statute to what we think it should be, for us, to give us the ability to better support our teachers in that way. Also, working on the best and brightest issue, working on the certification issue, those are all issues we'll be specifically bringing up with them tomorrow, and when we try to transfer, when we travel to Tallahassee. So, I just want you to know, we hear you, and we are working both at a local level and a state level to work on those issues you brought to us, and thank you for that.
Well said. Next up, oh, next up is me. I'll tell you what, next up is Ms. Gallo, or Member Gallo, and I'll come back at the conclusion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Lynda kind of covered, or Member Colbert covered pretty much what I wanted to say, except I just wanted to offer my thank you as well. It was well-organized, it was so helpful, being a new school board member up here, to listen to the teachers, to hear what they have to say. As Member Colbert said, there were some solutions. And I think that we all just make a great team, and I was proud to be there that night, and I look forward to working with you. So, thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair.
Thank you. I failed to mention that those of us that did attend the Leadership Conference that was led by Dr. Jenkins' leadership team, they were all teachers presenting, and administrators presenting collaboratively together, and that was very, very impressive. Those that were there were teachers, full house, full house at Oak Ridge. That leadership team, they want to become leaders. They want to become team leaders, grade-level leaders, and the information that was given out that night, that was very surprising to me, because I don't think I have been to one quite like that. But, to see all of those classroom teachers and administrators working together, and lead teachers, all just talking about bettering themselves, and moving up the ladder, was very, very impressive. Dr. Jenkins, that was, Ms. Abbey, Dr. Abbey's group, it was very well-planned, very organized, and I think you got some great feedback from that conference. And these are teachers, so this is what I'm talking about. People want to better themselves, they want to do good, they want us to be together. And that's the biggest thing. If everybody's pulling everybody's down, and you over here doing this, and that one's over there doing that, you're not going to be together. You've got to come together and be one big team, and we all will make it to the top.
Thank you. All right. Let me close out, I think, this evening, by also thanking Ms. Dormel and the union for hosting the event, for the very, I felt very positive and productive conversation. It was a one-way conversation, admittedly, but it was helpful, as I think Member Colbert mentioned, there were positive solutions put on the table. There were a few things that I heard, that I've heard quite frequently, that I think we can figure out whether or not we really have a problem, and whether it's in certain schools. And it goes back to the issue of whether or not teachers in some schools are being discouraged from reporting disciplinary problems in their classroom. And I will, as I think most of you all, I have friends that teach throughout Orange County Public Schools, and that is a comment that I've heard too many times, to not take it seriously enough, to strongly believe that as part of our survey, that we need to make sure we provide people the opportunity to share with us if there is any kind of discouragement in reporting disciplinary problems. And I found myself during our strategic meeting, when I looked at some of the scorecards, realizing that sometimes we're, we set out with the best of intentions, we want to see that discipline problems are going down. And yet, sometimes the measurement tool can mislead us. I'm not saying that's the case, but I think it's really important for us to know if we have any schools that, where teachers feel some sort of pressure. Because, and I do want to be clear also, that the message that I heard from teachers wasn't that they wanted their kids expelled, it was just that they wanted to be able to seek help in the classroom, in an open environment. So, I think that would be good for us to try to clarify. And it may be, and Dr. Jenkins, there's so many times when what I hear here is not always what you hear, and I think communication is such an important part. And being on the inside, I have this opportunity to see what I didn't see on the outside, which is how much effort you put in to communicating your values and your message. And I want to thank you and applaud you for doing that. The second thing, and I think, and you mentioned it already, Member Kestrel Dennel, and that is the issue of... is the issue of degrees and fair compensation for those degrees. And I would, I need to understand this better. What I heard was a couple of specific cases of people who, based on what they said, it sounded like they should have gotten pay because it was in line with what they were teaching. And it actually sounded very similar to a situation that we recently had with a cabinet level appointment, where what a degree looks like it's in isn't necessarily indicative of the school and what it really represents. So I want to make sure that we're going that extra mile in fully hearing out these teachers. I know you're talking about changes, but I'm actually talking about, is there a possibility, based on what we heard there, that some of our teachers are not getting the additional pay? It may not be the case, but I think based on the three or four people that brought that up, it's something that I don't know enough about, but I'd like to make sure that we're fully looking at that. Dr. Jenkins.
I was good.
It's not just me. Good.
I was just going to clarify for the board. And so the state does have guidelines on where you pay additional, where the state believes or recognizes a master's degree for additional pay. That does not mean the district could not negotiate and say, we're going to pay it outside of the state guidelines. It's something that would have to go to the negotiation table because if you have one pot of money, there'd have to be an agreement that you're going to set aside some of that to pay for master's degrees that the state does not recognize. But it can be negotiated. And I think by and large, we have such a wonderful chief negotiator. I think a lot of this, if they run that collaborative model, they set up committees to work on those various issues. And it may come back when we have an executive session around compensation. It may come back that they've agreed. I hope the state gives us more than the 1.3 that we were just looking at that was not categorical, that could be used toward raises. But if there's a nice sum of money, then we can certainly negotiate as part of that, that the district will pay for some of those master's degrees that the state does not recognize. And so all of that can go to the bargaining table.
So just so I'm not misunderstood or not speaking clearly, what I'm actually referring to is a couple of people who, based on their examples, it sounds like they probably may have qualified under the state guidelines?
State decides. State decides.
Please. I mean, again, I feel like I'm in a world speaking a different language. So I understand that I'm not completely understanding all this, but it did sound like they might have degrees in the right area, but it wasn't interpreted that way.
Just to give an example, and it does start at the legislature and the statutes that were created. I have a master's degree in literacy studies, that's teaching reading and writing, yet that wasn't recognized as a teacher in 4th grade. I have a PhD in curriculum and instruction, teaching 4th grade. They didn't count it because it wasn't in elementary education. So it totally fits what I'm doing, but there's a narrow definition for it in the statute. So, and there are a lot of people who are affected like that throughout the district.
Thank you. All right. With that, I think that wraps up our evening. Is there anything else to come before the school board? Dr. Jenkins? All right. And again, I want to thank the union for putting together the summit. It was very informative. I want to recognize the superintendent for that leadership opportunity for our teachers. It's just an incredible opportunity. There's so many opportunities for our teachers, and I think it's good for morale for them to know, not only other opportunities, but we're here to nurture and help them achieve those. So with that, I bid everyone good night and adjourn this meeting.